Well, we need one more commissioner to walk in the room. Sure. Pardon? I haven't heard any different. I haven't heard that. Make sure you sign the roster. Well, first we do a pat down.
Really?
No. Well, yeah, you, you'd, unfortunately, I would do it, I suppose.
Just my name or where I'm from or?
Just put your name. The meeting is supposed to start at nine o'clock, but right now, there's only two of us, so we can't even call it to order, because we need a quorum. We need at least three. This has never happened. There's, there, we've always been at least four of us here by nine o'clock.
Let's note it. Jamie was here.
That's right.
On time. Early. Early according to our terribly wrong clock.
I had to put her in four-wheel drive to get through Airport Road this morning.
Oh, I suppose you come through that way, huh? Has, has, I haven't driven down that road in twenty years. Has that been improved, or is it still a trail?
It's still a kind of a trail, but it was improved. And then they, um, after our last commission meeting, no. Yeah, it was like, the day after, the Thursday after our last commission meeting, um, I went through it. And then I met the snow blower and the blade, and then I got buried up to my driver windows.
Well, we have enough here. We can call the meeting to order. Pardon?
Do we need Gwen or?
We should have one of them here. Okay, we'll call this, um, regular monthly commission meeting to order. We have the agenda in front of us. Are there any changes, additions to the agenda?
Yes, I have some additions and some things that we need to remove. Um, if we could please add siren, crib, appointee, under other business. And also delinquent tax properties.
I can't even spell that word, delinquent tax, okay?
And then under treasurer's report, she would like to remove the weed CD.
Okay.
And add duplicate check. Number five, four, four, seven, two. To Michael Rauch. For forty-four dollars and thirty-seven cents.
Did you say Brauch?
R.A.U.C.H.
I couldn't bring any pen today. Again.
Any other additions to the agenda?
Uh, purchase of, uh, other, other business, a purchase of canine for the sheriff's department.
Any other additions to the agenda or changes? Hearing none, do I have the mo, a motion to approve the agenda as amended?
I vote.
A second.
Okay. Hearing no other changes? Jamie?
Aye.
Rick?
Aye.
Jean, aye. And now we move right on to review the bills.
We have to do the minutes.
Do we do the minutes?
Uh, we, oh, what, do we have the minutes?
I thought you printed, I have a copy, too.
Yep.
Oh, I do have a copy. Sorry about that. Do I have a motion to approve the minutes as presented?
I saw move.
One second.
Oh, that's where I went wrong. I already got you. Change it here. Rick, and here's Rick and Jamie. Okay. Rick, how do you?
I vote aye.
Jamie?
Aye.
Jean votes aye. That's why I jumped ahead. I had him. Now we can review the bills. Any idea where those two are? Why is, Travis?
Yeah, they're waiting to take their kids to school because there's, the schools are on one hour delay.
Oh, okay. Uh, we go through all the bills, every meeting, and it looks like if you want to go have a cup of coffee or something, we don't have a cafe nearby, but you could probably make it to Hazen and back. It's gonna take at least twenty minutes, I would say. We'll probably even, uh, table this at nine-thirty. But maybe we'll get through it quicker, I don't know. But we look at every bill. Just out of curiosity, what particular item are you here for? Okay, gotcha. I should have known. Yep. Oh, no, not me. Uh-uh. I have no financial interest in that farm. I am just the hired hand. I have, I can say I'm pretty sure he turned in a bid, but I have no idea what it is. Honestly, I do not. No, no, I gotta say that because this is being recorded, so that people know that. No, I do not know. He did not tell me. And on a lot of, lot of items out there, people will ask me, and I go, I don't know. It's, that's not my business. I'm, the money part is not mine. Except my pay. That I know what it is. Oh, gosh, so yours is all the way at ele, that's on eleven fifteen.
Are you serious?
Landfill lease bids, eleven fifteen.
So you really could go for coffee and breakfast and pop.
We will not, because that item, sometimes we can move the time a little bit, but no, that item will be at eleven fifteen. Because if there's other parties that read this, they see eleven fifteen, they'll be here at eleven, for eleven fifteen. That's when the meeting starts. But on the agenda, it's at eleven fifteen, sorry. Yeah, you'll have to wait. Even if we're done with everything else, we'll recess until. It'll be at exactly eleven, that eleven fifteen. And it's three minutes fast, yep. Sorry, but I, I'm glad I asked you, so that you don't, yeah. Have we said eleven fifteen, huh? Did we say it at eleven fifteen today, or?
There was no time sent.
Okay.
So I just put it on where we had a slot.
That's fine. Yep.
I put lightbulb, headlight in my Buick, I got a on plate, three hundred forty-three dollars for a bulb.
The taillight on my Yukon is over seven hundred dollars. You can't just do the bulb, you have to do the whole thing.
Really?
Yeah, they said the pickup, uh, a new, new Ford pickup they were talking about, too. They gotta take the whole front end off to put, to put him in. You can't even get out. They took the bumper out of mine to get at it.
Well, just a little story I used to tell, only, I forget what, it was a Chevy car, forget what model. And I was trying to figure out how to replace the headlight. Uh, you know, I did the YouTube thing. I couldn't find it, and all I could ever find was, you gotta take it to your dealer, you gotta take it to your dealer. Finally, I found a link. Yeah. I basically took the whole front end apart, had to take the tire off, had to take that, whatever you call it, that line that cut out.
The inside liner, the?
Yeah, that, uh.
Fender wall?
Yeah, the fender well.
Yeah.
Out, and, uh, well, after that, I replaced them both. Because the bulb was only like, whatever they are, twenty bucks or something.
Yeah, that's what I was asking him when he did it, and we do, he said it looked all right, the other one, but still.
Nope. After all that, I said, I took pictures, but I lost them. You know, the phones that went through.
I did something I never did either, but as I bought a warranty on that thing, I'm glad I did too.
I have the extended warranty, that's why, so I didn't have to fork over the seven hundred dollars, but it was.
And that covered the lights?
Not the light.
The taillight. For mine, it covered the taillight.
Really?
How do I know which one is which goes first, goes like this?
So you should grab.
I grabbed two of them, I know.
Okay.
I have to get better.
Golden Valley was second, so that one's first.
Yeah, the first couple of times I did it, I had them all jacked up. And the auditor was sitting there giving me hell.
They had a sensor in the back. They said they got a sink in there and stuff, and they said that, so the heat to front and the back, this is the same. And then when they, when they got in there, they put the code reader in there, and they pumped that, that sensor with dog in the back. I had no idea, because it didn't write in the back, but they, uh, fixed that too, and the part was like twenty-four dollars, but it was like six hundred dollars to put it in again, you know? That's the warranty took care of.
Well, we had a, uh, a Buick, uh, Acadia, and we had trouble with the cameras. Oh. They were getting tired of me bringing that thing in. It just, just our screen, our info system just go black with a big red triangle. I don't know what all they replaced. Finally, they replaced.
What did they do here with this one? Seventy-one thousand. Do you know what that one is?
That's part of the.
Each factor, so. And when they were here, when one eyes first got here, they were walking around over there.
Yeah.
Pulling cables and stuff.
Right. They'll be sending in bills periodically once they've dealt with different stations. He's really good about giving you guys updates when they've completed something, moving out of something else.
At least that wasn't, that won't be coming. Sheriff's Department, those always twist me a little bit.
One thing about giving either.
That advice, leftovers.
They're one of the more reasonable ones around.
And bring it up, and here we go.
That's why I giggled.
Oh, goodness.
They don't give a place for yelling, do they?
Oh.
Dollar seventy?
It should be on there. This is a contract price.
They're going to contract mine too, but I'm sure mine is empty, you know?
Yeah, two years ago, I'd like to have been able to fill mine with that contract price that they have. Two years ago, the propane contracted price. I'd like to have been able to have, use that in my house.
That's what I, we contracted at home for the, for the whole winter. The only thing I told Riley to do more this year, and she didn't, so now we're out. So last week, I filled Friday and, uh, Dick City and get a pay, pay for it again, so, you know, it's up there again.
Unknown caller.
Yeah, forget it.
Splitworm tire. You still have some of them, huh?
Uh, we have like five, four trucks with it, so Semex is our, plenty of hazens. They're about the only ones that'll do them still.
Semex and hazen, yeah. Yeah, Kim will still do those. What's got split? What do?
I have the landfill.
What?
Doesn't she have a dump, is there a dump truck that's still got a splitworm?
It's gotta be. Is that an old truck or is? Splitworms were even. Okay. I'm gonna be answering dumb questions again.
I can ask you, but I think it's a dump truck.
It's the landfill.
I, yeah, I think it's like a dump truck out there.
When I worked at the gas station in Hazen in seventy-six, they had a cage where you could put them in, and they fill them up in there.
Yep.
I gotta make myself a cheat sheet, because I haven't done one of these yet.
I haven't done one yet.
I got double paid.
Yeah, you did.
Now, there, now I'm gonna get summoned to court.
You gotta pay advance. We'll call it that.
Got advanced payment. I don't keep track of that stuff, so. Like I told Gwen, you do what you gotta do to correct it. I, I wouldn't even, I wouldn't have even known. But I understand I have to be told, I get that. What I should have to do is just turn them all in at the end of the year instead of each month. Because I don't remember each month, and then it gets to be three months.
I was gonna do three months at a time. Does that sound sufficient? Or would you like every month?
I get so many of them, they're all these different.
Monthly would be probably the best, but, I mean.
I gotta get with the program, but, yeah.
I asked, nobody said there was like a rule on it, so.
There is no rule, no, but it's easier for us to keep track of, so, once, when it's monthly.
I was planning after this meet, like, December, January, February, like, three months.
And then you got all these other meetings you go to, and like, you know, these are.
I forget.
Summits or whatever, whoever, like the one I saw here.
Well, then if anything changes, like the mileage, you know, amounts and stuff like that, then.
Well, that's, our mileage would have, if you did it for the year.
And, right, so then if like, the state changes it again, happen through the year, or, then if you guys wait after that, then we have to calculate what that one was, and then the new rate and.
Because that's what's gonna happen, like on mine now, is because. Part of mine was, in December, would have been the old mileage.
Oh, I didn't think about that.
Yeah.
I was thinking about that, too.
That's why it's, it's.
I should set, when I do them, I should do them separately. I was gonna do like six meetings, but.
Yeah, I mean, you can do them separately, that would be beneficial to us, too.
At least them, the ones that, in that year, and then the other ones at the next one.
Yeah, especially when it comes to the end of the year, too, it's easier for us and our record keeping if it gets turned in before January. If it's anything from the year prior.
I'll have to change mine, so I don't total it. Because it doesn't matter if I total it. If it's wrong, you guys correct it anyway, so. Because I think I have mine where it totals it, and it has the mileage. Well, that changed, so now that'll be wrong again. That's where the other.
You think Travis sent a new, I don't know, I think he sent it to everybody with the new land trade on it, a spread, electronic spreadsheet.
Yeah, I updated it, and I, that.
Has changed it, huh?
No.
I guess I won that, yeah. Sixty. We rounded up to sixty-six. It was, the new one was sixty-five and a half. And the old one was, what, sixty-three every year? Because it would take more work to figure out than that, for them, too. Is hers, oh, this, when her stuff comes, like Carmen's, uh, the nine-one-one, no, there must come, uh, two different ways. Whatever comes to us through the budget, and what, that we see, and the other stuff goes directly to the nine-one-one. There's another funds for that, or how does that work?
No, so she'll actually put on the voucher which fund it's coming out of.
Oh, so you'll do that one, and we'll go through the.
So, Rick, like here, she puts the account. So if it starts with two-nine-one-one, then that's the nine-one-one account. But if it says one-zero-zero-one, then that's part of the general fund, so you'll know that's the emergency.
That's where you'll set it.
And she's really good about that, putting in account numbers.
On this quadrant, or quadient postage funding, they charge us the late fee on the thirtieth, but it looks like our payment, well, I guess the transaction date was the twentieth, but then the post-it date was the thirty-first, so that must be why they charge the late fee.
So what, uh, do we, what do we ambulance transport for the county?
None, not, none on the here.
Ambulance transport?
Yeah, that we would pay three hundred dollars.
Was it anything to do with the coroner or anything like that?
Sheriff's Department?
Yeah, and then it, it. I can't say the patient name out loud. It's actually on here. I can't believe it's on here.
Oh, yes, that was a.
Okay.
Yes.
You can just say yes.
And the late fee, I'd have to look into that a lot, and why.
I think it's because, like, it looks like we paid it on the twentieth, but that must have been like a Friday or like after three, and they didn't receive it till the thirty-first, so they, that's why they charged the late fee. But the, but the late fee on, oh, and then there's the thirty, no, the late fee with the finance charge must, yeah, that's the A B, A B form.
The wax cards, now those are, those are, I was just thinking about this, those are all like, when you do a wax, that they're like tax exempt?
Everything should be taxed, isn't it, from the.
Because the reason I was saying, asking is like, like the school does a wax card, too, and I was just wondering, because they gotta be tax exempt, too.
Right, yeah.
Good morning.
I just slid down for, for bills. I just slid down for, for bills.
Start a new stack, and I'm doing a distraction every time.
So it's like. I, I, I don't, I thought it was like.
You have to.
No, boy, I haven't had, I haven't had that, to be able to, you know, accept or share it with me or something like that, so.
Yeah.
I don't know, we want to, something else, if I can just fax it over to us.
Yeah.
Cause I don't want, I don't want it to be changing, I don't know, you don't wanna like, you know.
Right, yeah. Yeah, I just couldn't figure it out, cause I'm like, why is this not working?
Yeah, right.
Sam, when you get this file checked, make sure you do it, I, I don't know.
That's okay, you just send them on down.
They're probably gonna be rep on a revenue.
We understand.
I don't know which one was which, so just, there's about four or five that we wanna check here.
Okay. I'm gonna add this to your pile, Jean.
I know this one's not right.
Morning.
Didn't want you to miss.
Oh, okay.
Part of me can share this part.
Part of the duties.
I don't know, I guess I don't know if you can ask for it. Be part of the execution process? But I don't know for sure.
That's what you're gonna get at one.
All, all you needed was the garbage can to be right there.
Where the heck did it?
It's not here.
Lost my garbage can.
This is what I worked on, wasn't it?
Right, he wore his.
Yeah.
He was more like officially. Rick, do you know, did he? Is Sheryl getting a uniform now because he does transports? Isn't this bad job? He's a travel guy.
No, he really is.
So I was just wondering why he was getting.
I, I know he has been holding the transports, but I, so I, I don't think that he could use his.
His other ones, you know, just use their uniforms, that's why I was just wondering if he's actually.
I don't know why they did that, but I, I didn't know.
Okay, just wondering. Yep.
Maybe he's gonna help.
Is that gonna help?
No, cause he'd have to, it's.
I don't even know his name. This guy, I don't remember that guy. After the people here, I don't know.
Liza, did you want me to hold this one out?
No, I was just wondering if he was added to the.
Oh, that's gonna be.
No, I didn't know.
I'm assuming that's present on one of your phone?
It was pants or something.
Yeah, I was gonna say, it's just. It's not even.
Not even for one, okay.
Yeah, they're not cheap. Yeah, that sounds about right for pants.
They got Kevlar in them, or what?
No.
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 Nope.
You would think they would at that price, but nope.
Scrubs are pretty simple, and they're still running, except for.
Yeah.
I suppose if you got some, you can stick ours, that's a, if you got some main print pants, like a tuck, it's over here.
The main main print for us are five elevens.
Five elevens, will you buy five elevens?
Nope, no, they're tactical.
No. Definitely different.
Yeah. They are really nice though, I will give them that, they're very, very nice.
Funny how a pair of pants can take up a couple minutes of our conversation.
Right.
Happy Wednesday.
Oh, yeah. True, yeah, they probably had to be. Usually you gotta go in and get fitted.
Yeah.
She hasn't had anything in the.
Yeah. Maybe CD. Yeah, if people could check. I believe that was an issue.
I get kids too after today. I said I get kids now too after all.
Yeah, when they started that like, number six, four, and.
Okay, do you have a motion to approve bills as presented?
I'll so move.
Second?
I'll second.
Who is it, Jamie?
Yeah.
Any further questions? If not, Rick?
I vote aye.
Jamie?
Aye.
Liza?
Aye.
Travis?
Aye.
Jean, aye. Now the chairman's here, he'll take over the meeting.
All right, thanks, Jean. Um, just so I'm in the right order, do we change anything on the agenda?
Yes.
Yep. Under nine thirty, we have scratch out weed CD. Did you get the changes?
Yeah.
I handed them to.
Okay.
Siren appointment. Tax property, delinquent tax properties, dedicate purchase.
Okay, thank you.
And you got the additional for the duplicate check for the treasurer's report?
Yep.
Okay. Uh, treasurer's report, Don, thanks for waiting.
Good morning. Okay, first of all, treasurer's report, did everybody get their emails?
Yes.
They said they all went, just wanted to make sure everybody's on it. Okay, thank you. Questions?
Cash balance looks good.
For now. Yes. Okay, Mercer County, we'll do the hard one first. Mercer County Housing Authority, you guys all had a chance to look at that stuff that I presented to you a couple weeks ago. Okay, so what do you wanna do? I have looked, it appears that all their specials are paid. Last year, we sent it back to them, I found the minutes where it was motioned and approved to move them, give them back to them, and then they sent them back to me. They said that those two properties were HUD properties, and they didn't need that money, they thought Mercer County could use it more, so they sent it back to me, and I apportioned it like we would any other in lieu of taxes. Now, I don't know if that will happen again this year, or why they even sent us the check, if that's their intent, but we have a check, so what would you like to do with it?
And this is an ongoing history where they paid and we reimbursed, because it's.
We paid, we reimbursed, yes.
Yeah. I don't know why we deviate, anybody have any opinions either way? I mean, and if they send it back to us again, I mean, then, then we'll just leave it.
Then just. And I'll just proceed as I did last year with it? Okay, I will do an exchange check for that, if that works for me. Um, the CD interest. I looked back, and I have records back as far as two thousand two, the interest on the building improvement fund always went into the building improvement fund. Except for two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty-one, and two thousand twenty-two, when it went into the general interest account. Don't know why. I don't know if that was a need we had at the time for that interest, although I can't believe that that interest amount would have saved us, if you know what I mean, it's not like it's great amounts or anything. But I'm asking your permission to roll it back into the CD, into the actual building fund. I'm personally a believer that where possible, the interest should stay with the CDs it goes with, but that's your manager's call.
And how much are we talking about?
Um, I don't know about that, I didn't hear you guys. I did not.
Can you give us a rough ballpark?
Was it like three thousand?
Close, okay, yeah.
Yeah.
Three, four thousand, not three hundred thousand, no, thirty thousand.
I just wanted to know if it was like a huge amount, or if it was just.
No, like, we're talking in the lower thousands, I think, I don't remember exactly, but it's less than ten, but it's not, I'm pretty sure it's.
Well, with the, the amount of stuff that we're doing with the building, I don't feel like we would, I think it should stay.
I feel like it should stay there.
Yeah, I'd be in favor of leaving it right in the fund.
Okay, right now, we only have two, um, the interest does not roll on the actual multi-bank, because they don't wanna carry over two hundred fifty thousand per account. Um, our CDs that we have, and the one CD that we have in Union Bank does not roll either, that one, we just put into that interest account. So as far as I can think of, you know, off the top of my head, those are the only two right now that aren't rolling it, so. But these specialized accounts, like the weed and the, the building, I think they should stay with them, so.
I agree.
If you're all in favor of that, I'm okay with that too. Do we need a, we probably need a motion on that, just because I would feel safer that way, just future.
Right. So we're just doing the interest now, the previous years, we're gonna leave as they were?
We'll just leave it, cause that's a journal entry that's, we'll just, I think, just leave it as it is and go from here.
Cause, yeah. Okay, is there a motion to leave the interest from CDs in the building fund with the building fund?
I'll so move.
Motion by Rick, is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Jamie, any discussion? Seeing none, Rick?
Aye.
Jamie?
Aye.
Liza?
Aye.
Jean?
Aye.
All vote aye, that motion passes.
Okay, and then my duplicate check request. I have a duplicate, uh, request for a duplicate check from a Michael Rousch, um, for forty-four dollars and thirty-seven cents. Signed a, um, thanks, say if he didn't cash it, he doesn't have it, he wants us to reissue it. I need a motion for you guys to authorize me to do that.
Is there a motion to authorize treasurer's department to issue a duplicate check?
I'll move.
Motion by Jamie, is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Liza, any discussion? Seeing none, Jamie?
Aye.
Liza?
Aye.
Rick?
Aye.
Jean?
Aye.
All vote aye, that motion passes. Anything else, Don?
No, I'm tougher.
Is, is today your like, big day, when all the discounts are last day?
Yes, and the mail is late, so I can only imagine. What our pile will be like, so. Have a great day, everybody.
Sounds good.
Thank you, Don, appreciate it.
Thank you, Don.
And just like that, we're back on, uh, on, on time. Budget amendments?
Um, yep, you should have those, a list of the, uh, accounts that we need to amend from twenty twenty-two. And then also a revenue and expenditure summary from twenty twenty-two. And then I did kind of go through and list, kind of, it seems like in the past, the auditor just made notes of kind of why we went over, or of course, some of the.
And then I did kind of go through and list kind of, it seems like in the past, the auditor just made notes of kind of why we went over, or of course, some of the, um, mill levy funds would, some of their revenue exceeded estimates, so that's why they went over, you know, all those accounts that whatever money is received, it just goes right back to those funds. The library, historical society, commission on aging water resource, Custer Health, ambulance, airport.
This is why I don't rely on my memory. Seven hundred ninety dollars and twenty-nine cents.
Okay.
That's why I come in for those.
Just leave it.
Thank you, Don.
So when we have revenues exceed estimates, that just stays in that fund and then we roll that forward into future budgets, or?
Nope, so that's just stuff that was paid out. So like their account exceeded, like, so it looks like it was negative, but it's because they actually had brought in revenue from taxes that we had to send out, so that their revenue shows, or their expenditure shows, well, no, I guess that's backwards, sorry. Anything that we receive from those funds just goes right back to them. So then if there was anything that, or the revenue that was estimated is lower than what we received, that's why it shows that overage.
So county library, they have, for instance, three thousand dollars more in their account?
They received three thousand dollars more.
Than what they spent?
Than what we estimated for those taxes.
And that could be somebody was delinquent one year but then caught up, or various reasons.
Right.
Various reasons, yeah.
I mean, that's the one that comes to my mind is if somebody was a year or two behind and then caught up, then it's received in a different year than it was actually taxed.
For health insurance, it being on here twice.
So there's a health insurance account that is employee paid, and then there's a health insurance account that's employer con- contrib-.
Contribution.
Yeah, contribution. So that's why that's on there twice, and I believe the reason why those went negative is we had the addition of a corrections officer that was not budgeted for, and then also payouts, or if we had to extend their health insurance if they left, so the county covers that the rest of the month for them. So we had a few employees leave during the, during twenty twenty-two, so. Same with, uh, social security. And then I believe Terry was in here to discuss why the sheriff's budget went over, and the state's attorney, we had originally budgeted for the, um, cause I believe Todd came in in January, so that salary was for the previous state's attorney, and you guys, I believe it was adjusted for him when he was hired.
It was hiring him.
And we don't budget anything for expenditures for CD interest, so if there was anything that we use those funds for, that's why it always shows that it's possibly negative.
So the. The road expenditure we exceeded, three twenty-one, four fifty-five?
Yep.
Is that because of the storms in November, December?
No.
That's because of the consultation that we have, right?
Yep.
Did that exceed what was budgeted, or did it exceed the appropriations?
The appropriation, or the expenditures exceeded the appropriations, so we went past that, what we had budgeted, three hundred and twenty-one thousand dollars.
Because we budgeted for this year instead of last year, right?
Well, that was included all of the, you, um, I think mostly what went over was the consult fees, and I'd have to look back in there. I didn't print that off and bring it in.
There's a, there's a combination, I think.
But yeah, I think it was just a combination of why we went over, but I know that we had addressed it, I think, back in November, is when that, we started seeing that we were going over in the county road fund, so.
Yeah, that's what I remember talking about, because we weren't thinking about the fact that we need to do the consultation fees like a year ahead of time instead of.
Correct. Yeah, for, uh, I see where you're going, yeah, for future projects, yeah.
Right?
Well, and then were any of the bridge projects even budgeted? Because the one would have been closed in October of twenty-one, and we immediately started, so it would have been after the budget approved, so everything we did on the crossroads bridge, everything we did on county one, and then the one, um, the south part of the county two, like, none of those were budgeted.
So what it amounts to then is that we did the work and then it's actually gonna, the money to be appropriated is gonna show up in the next year or something like that?
Part of this.
Part of it, yeah. So then, just for everybody's benefit, when a fund goes negative, the general, uh, sub player basically fills that in?
So there was a reserve for the, the general fund, and then there was a little bit of reserve for the unorganized road and for the aid to secondary, so that helped a little bit, but yeah. If you look on the revenue and expenditure, we actually didn't go at the total, at the end, we actually went above estimates on our revenue by one point eight million, and then we went over budget total by four hundred and sixty-two thousand, so we did have enough revenue to cover what we expended.
Okay.
And that's including the accounts that, of course, didn't even meet their, but, you know, that who came in under budget, so that helped also.
Well, that makes me feel a lot better.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I was a little nervous there.
No.
Whoa, whoa, whoa.
Yeah. It's, doesn't, this, she does, makes it look bad, this sheet makes it look much better.
Should've gone to the last page.
Right. I was stuck on the first page. I should've.
Okay.
So basically, we would have, if we wouldn't make any changes, we'd just have to make a motion to adjust these accounts to reflect these expenses and income?
Correct, yeah. We could just make a motion to amend these, the accounts presented. I believe that's how she's done it in the.
Yeah, you do a motion to amend the twenty-two budget based on the recommendations or as presented. And it's, it's more or less a bookkeeping thing, but yeah, the, the most important thing is that we look at some areas we were over, but on an overall budget, we were, we were under. Which, my thought process with a budget's always, it's, it's a guideline. And if we finish the year under budget, we did really well. If we finished the year over budget, we didn't do so well.
I'd have no problem making these adjustments, but I will have to ask the road department for clarity on like that, because that's a big number.
It's a big number.
But as I would say, there's nothing we can really do about it. That's, this isn't behind us, so we just have to make the adjustments to make it right.
Right, and we would have approved all the, like, design requests, all, all those budgets. I guess, I don't, it'd be nice to, you know, if we digest it and look at it, you know, did, did the road department actually go over budget, or was it merely all the unforeseen bridges and things like that that we had to do? You know what I'm getting?
Yes.
It's all part of the road, but did the, did the road department, I, I believe they were probably under budget, but.
Really, would you, uh, in retrospect, looking back on twenty-two, when you budgeted for that, and then when they went over budget in twenty-two, you wouldn't have known the big price hike and fuel and all that either. You know, that would reflect that, too.
Yeah, right. But then you all also remember that when the budget was, um, approved for last year, that unorganized road levy was approved at the total value of, of the county mill. And when we, when we did the budget for this, for twenty twenty-three, we can't include the city's value, so that's why, too.
Oh, yep.
The estimate for our mills was a lot lower.
True.
Of what we actually brought in than what we estimated. I said that backwards. We brought in less because our unorganized rose, value should be less, not, it should not include the cities, but we included the cities in twenty twenty-two, so it, we had a higher estimate of what we were bringing in than what we actually should have, or than what we actually did.
Well, I think we, we also learned, too, that when we work on the budget this year, we want to make sure that if we have projects coming up, that we have the money set aside beforehand for any of the consultation beforehand, so we can try and get that to line up better for when it actually comes out of our budget.
So your numbers line up with you?
Right.
Right. So like, if we're planning certain projects in twenty-four, we should have had budgeted, um, the design fees in twenty-three.
Right.
And what we were doing was they were all lumped together.
And we should have broke that out.
We should have broken them out. This comes first, this comes second, but it's gonna take us.
A little bit to catch up on that.
Yeah. And I guess with a lot of the projects we got now are, are federal aid, so we're gonna get money, like eighty percent of it, so depending on how we, um, budget for those, and then also, um, in twenty-three, we budgeted a certain amount for, um, the prairie dog money, and that's been exceeded what we budgeted, too, so I think we have the ability to absorb what we need to and then get on track going forward.
And get it actually working in the right format.
I'll make a motion to make these adj- to make these adjustments.
Okay, motion by Jean to approve the budget amendments as presented. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Rick. Any discussion? Any discussion? Seeing none. Jean?
Aye.
Rick?
Aye.
Liza?
Aye.
Jamie?
Aye.
All vote aye. That motion passes.
Thank you for putting that all together, Sam. Appreciate that.
Yeah, you're welcome.
Let's take a few minute recess here.
Bye, Doc.
All right, I'll call the meeting back to order. Um, we don't have anybody here from the road yet, but, um, let's just keep going down.
I did talk to him about that policy, if you want a just brief update, but, uh, we did discuss it and, uh, the policy on it, and we both come to the conclusion that what we're doing is pretty inefficient, but we didn't really come up with a different plan on how to do it, rather than, you know, going over to county, like, how they go about the collector roads and all this, it's what, we end up going back and forth empty with our, you know, without blading, you know? I can see both sides of the coin. If you might have someone on one side of the county wouldn't get out, you know, or maybe you can get out to the main road, at least we get the main roads open first, rather than going and like cleaning one section first and another. Technically, they'll get done in three days with like, say, uh, one route.
With like a snow event or something.
So, yeah, on a snow event. So when you go get the main routes open, at least everybody can get to that point anyways, but you would have to have somebody, I mean, you would end up being a lot more efficient by staying in one area and completing it, then go back to the shop, and then go back to the next one and completing it and go back to the shop. But right now, we go do these main roads, and then we drive back the next day or whatever, empty or whatever, to get the, get the side roads and those type of things.
We have, do we have plow trucks?
We have two of them, but they usually, they stay on the pavement.
Okay.
The cut, mainly the reason because they stay on the pavement is because of the cutting edges. You have special cutting edges that go on, high dollar cutting edges that go on for pavement versus the gravel roads. That was one thing that we, we discussed briefly about it. I don't know if it's the answer, but.
It's just more timely with a truck versus a blade, but the cutting edges makes sense.
For the pavement, but if, if we were to, say, down the road in the budget, if you were to buy a, another plow truck, you use plow truck would be way cheaper than, or lease it or whatever you're gonna do, but way cheaper than getting another blade. But, you know, for heavy snow events, it wouldn't work.
No.
But I mean, for quickly, see, we do have the old one that we could put the old cutting edge, you know, the different cutting edges on. We could run along, they got a wing and a plow, and you could run up and down the roads for smaller snow events, but.
Is there any other use for the plow trucks other than the plowing, or?
Well, they sand, mainly they do the sanding and the plowing for the, um, I don't think they use them other than in the summertime.
That, that's what I'm getting at. I mean, that's where we have to juggle between a piece of equipment that may be used four to six months out of the year versus a blade that can be used twelve months out of the year.
And then do we have enough drivers, too?
Right, that's the other thing.
Yeah, it's just, it was just a, you know, brought up, you know, whether, that was one thing he said, they used to have six blades, now we're down to five, but if we had another, another blade, that would, you know, speed up the process, too, but that, that's something we'd have to look at down the road, if we want to do that again.
Well, and what I've seen some cities do is in lieu of trying to have enough employees and have enough equipment, maybe having some type of contracts or, you know what I mean, like a, but yeah, the shifting is, is another thing that can, can be done, too. Yeah, cause I guess when you have one of those snow events, you're gonna just have blades and trucks out, which then if you offset your crews, you could run much longer.
You know, then you could.
We could do a combination of.
Particularly, somebody's always gonna be first and somebody's gonna be last, no matter what you do.
Correct.
But, you know, the thing about it is, is that if you can come up with a plan that try to be a little more efficient than what we're doing, especially in the summertimes and other.
True, it is, yeah.
For these snow events, or lack of snow events, so we, the guys were out clearing roads the other day, but there was just small sections that had blown in, but they're taking the blade all the way, it was just a lot of area covered, not blades down, because there wasn't the snow, but there was areas that they needed to clear still, so a plow truck might have been, it was probably faster, but maybe not better.
It's something, some that, I mean, we recommend it right now. We just thought we'd leave it alone and we'd, something that we could work on, and should come up with a different, unless you want to, we can, you know, we can stay with the old policy, but we can work on something that would be more effective.
Is Ken, does anyone know if Ken's coming?
Pardon?
She wanted to know if Ken was coming?
No, he had another, something else to do today.
Okay, so we don't have to wait.
And we can't put like a, I know, I don't know, is a tractor faster than a blade or not? Like if we put a plow on a tractor? No? I don't know, for someone with smaller, like, get to it.
I think they go about the same speeds.
Yeah. So, um, do you wanna recommend adopting the policy as it is now, and then you'll continue to work with Ken and his crew to see if there's any changes?
I recommend, I'll make a motion that we, uh, adopt, I believe the policy as it is now, and we'll continue working as to our new resolution.
Okay. Motion by Rick to approve the road policy for twenty twenty-three. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Jean. Any discussion?
How, how often do you think you'll be working on that?
To get something?
Yeah, if we want to adjust something, like, is it just, is there gonna be something where you meet with Ken, like, mugging it over?
Well, and Jean, you hold that portfolio, too. Did you have any input on it?
So may, maybe we wanna just, uh, instead of doing the road policy for twenty-three, we could just continue with our twenty-two policy, as, you know, being that it's still the same, and then we could maybe come to a different, uh, I like, I like to sit down with.
We'll review it.
Review it and get a little more input into it.
We can always, we can always make, um, changes.
Whenever, I mean, I mean, yeah, so we can adopt it as now.
Or just leave it, because it hasn't changed.
Correct.
It hasn't changed.
Well, we'll adopt it as is, and then we'll, we can, we can even make changes a month from now, so.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, any other discussion on the motion to, uh, continue with the road policy as, as written? Okay, seeing none. Rick? Okay, seeing none. Rick?
I guess I'll vote aye.
Gene?
Aye.
Liza?
Aye.
Jamie?
Aye.
All vote aye. That motion passes. All right, any other road concerns? I guess if Ken's not coming, um, I guess one question, have you guys um set up a time for RFP committee?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep, that'll be, I think they got moved, correct?
Yeah, it is.
Okay.
Yep.
January, oh, January, March thirteenth. Here at nine o'clock.
Okay.
There's so much for part of my. Update.
Okay, any other things on the road? Okay, seeing none. Let's go back to the other business. Um, HR is the next thing on the agenda.
Yeah, I had Sam, I was trying to get the one that I had from Dunn County to the job description. But unfortunately, we can't get it to print out right. It's in a secure email. We can't get it to print out straight, so we're working on that one. But I was just wondering what you guys would feel about me possibly asking Chuck Borda from the Daco to come, cuz he really does a lot of the HR. To like explain it to everybody and make sure that we all understand the need for it and what it would bring for us to the county. So I wanted to see if anybody was interested in me seeing if I could get him to come here to go over.
I would say I'd be interested, but. Probably later in the year when we get closer to budget.
I'm sure he's busy with legislation right now anyway, so I'm sure it wouldn't be till a little down the road, but I just wanted to see if there was an interest.
Oh, yeah.
From others. Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
Cuz I think the biggest thing is how this would affect our budget and it would be nice to hear. You know, from from him and um. But I definitely think it's needed, but I also wanna make sure that we got cover all our bases and we don't just.
Make the plan as you.
Yeah, correct.
Okay.
Now, I I guess, yeah, that would be.
Yeah, so if he's if he's dealing with the legislation, it could be made early June, which would be right around our budget season, so we would have. Have a better idea. Okay, anything else on the HR?
Nope.
Thanks for doing that, Liza. Um, P and Z appointment. Um, I think everybody got the email from Todd after he looked at it. He didn't see an issue because it's not a direct. Supervisor subordinate um situation and that was, that was my only question. I didn't think it was, but I just wanted a. Opinion from Todd before we moved forward, so um. If if there's no other questions, we can approve the applicant for planning and zoning to Maynard Zugger.
I I believe, yes.
Yep, so. Is there a motion to?
Uh, move that we approve uh Maynard Zugger as our P and Z pointee.
Okay, motion by Rick. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Jamie. Any discussion? Seeing none. Rick?
I vote aye.
Jamie?
Aye.
Liza?
Aye.
Gene?
Aye.
All vote aye. That motion passes. Uh, Todd's in here. State's Attorney Budget. Did you put that on there or?
Uh, I asked Sam to. There was a mistake. Um, Sam and I missed it from the preliminary to the final. Under library, it lists one ninety-nine something. That's our monthly charge to LexisNexis. So that number needs to be multiplied by twelve. And Sam and I talked about it. I swear we changed it on there. And then when I was signing this most recent bill, Michelle at my office pulled it up and said. This got changed back, so I wanted to bring that to the commission's attention. State's Attorney Association is getting a bit of a deal. We're trying to get a better deal. Um, State's Attorney Association Director, um, I think that's her title. Ashley Lees is the uh is working on twisting their arm because. A smaller counties that have one, maybe two people who are using it are paying about the same as the bigger counties. So we're trying to get a discount for that, but. As each of you know from both your commission and private lives, when you've got limited suppliers. And it's something that you need, and while it does seem a bit expensive, it's a lot cheaper than having a full-blown law library. I don't know that we even have one except for maybe at the law school and I've heard that's went downhill.
So what's that monthly, is it a monthly fee? How much?
What's listed on there is a yearly, a one ninety-nine something.
A hundred and ninety-nine dollars?
Yeah.
Okay.
So we're looking at an adjustment about twenty-four hundred dollars for that line item.
Yeah.
To cover that cost of that one ninety-nine per month.
And that's within the state's attorney's budget?
That is, he's requesting to amend that line item because that's not budgeted.
Yeah.
It'll have to come out of the general fund right now, is that what we're saying?
I I had proposed that to him. Um, well, it is, his whole budget comes out of the general fund.
Right.
So it would show as. A exceeding that line item at the end of the year and then we would just put it on the amended budget.
Yeah.
But.
We can either do it now or we can.
We needed the approval from the commission and also to let you guys know that that line item will be, yeah, that's why.
So if we move to amend it now, then it won't be on the year end portion?
If we move to amend it now, yes.
Oh. Okay, is there a motion to amend the state's attorney budget to account for the uh library use?
I'll move.
Motion by Jamie. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Liza. Any discussion? Seeing none. Jamie?
Aye.
Liza?
Aye.
Rick?
Aye.
Gene?
Aye.
All vote aye. That motion passes.
Yeah, we could have waited till the end of the year, but. Tell you a story, my twenty-first birthday, I walked into the fraternity house and they said, yelled surprise. I didn't about face that a marine drill instructor would have been. Impressed with and marched the heck out of there. I hate surprises and I don't want the commission to have a surprise on something like that at the end of the year. So.
Could you thank Michelle for catching that too?
I already have.
All right, appreciate that.
We appreciate it.
You know, thank you for the, and that's on me. I, when I looked at it, mentioned it and then didn't catch it later, so. Numbers aren't my strong suit. That's why I went to law school instead of NASA. That would have been cool to work for NASA.
Okay, uh, January sheriff's fees?
I just need a motion to approve January sheriff's fees of the amount of, in the amount of three thousand. Or thirty-six thousand, six hundred and forty-one dollars and seventy-five cents. And if you guys wanna look at that.
So moved.
Motion by Gene to accept the sheriff's fees. Is there a second?
Oh, second.
Seconded by Rick. Any discussion? Any discussion? Seeing none. Gene?
Aye.
Rick?
Aye.
Liza?
Aye.
Jamie?
Aye.
All vote aye. That motion passes. All right, um, Siren?
Oh, we need to call Carmen emphatically. She's in Gwen's office.
And um I think that sub- submit carbon solutions, I think that was left over from the last meeting. I don't think anybody's coming for that.
I was gonna say, it didn't sound like last time.
Nope, Amanda did call yesterday and confirm. She said that Ken was gonna give an update to that though, Ken Miller, so. If he's not available either.
Along those lines, I did go through that contract and wrote on it because I'm not smart enough to figure out how to do that with. The computer to highlight and do the side thing. I always screw it up, so I just wrote it out in hand and I um. Had scanned that, emailed it to Gwen so that can get through where it needs to go.
Okay.
Some of the changes was that I talked about in the meeting. County's not identifying any other bill, any other business. We can't.
You only see Carmen sitting here, but maybe Carmen's around the corner. What's that? They only see Gwen sitting out there, but maybe Carmen's around the corner.
Yeah, Gwen's not answering the phone.
Do you want me to go check?
I'll see if she's down at her office.
Just a second.
My contacts are so dry today. I feel like I'm like. You got your heater fixed, huh?
Selection eight pins with my uh, I'm gonna put a selection of eight pins in here so I have them.
Morning Carmen.
Morning. See a question on that getting Terry onto that crib. We didn't know any, we, they didn't start.
Nobody started.
We don't know where we're at.
Pass it around.
You're front and center.
Front and center, okay.
What we got going on?
Okay, it's just the um, this crib. Meeting is about, we do it once a month online. We've got Dave Hilliard from Oliver County and then always the sheriff from Mercer County. And then I'm the alternate cuz I'm the EM. And what it is, it makes sure that every county is. Involved in that siren radio project, so you always have a voice. That's what it gives. So every month we meet, we're the southwest region. And we all meet usually through the web, through a phone call, and then if we have any questions, any updates on the project, anything like that, that's what's discussed in there. So they need, and and you guys are the ones that appoint, and so you have to point. The sheriff now is Dean left and Terry's new.
Okay, all right. I was just wondering why it was on. I'm like, is it an update or what do we talk about siren? So I get it.
I didn't know if we needed, yeah, exactly, same thing.
So we have to appoint Terry Turnus?
Yes.
And Carmen Reed as the alternate?
No, I'm already on there.
She's on it already.
And, yeah, I'm already on there. You just need to point Terry because Dean left. Dean was the one that was there before. So it would just be a motion to appoint Terry Turnus.
To the Southwest Coordinated Regional Intro Probability Board?
What was that?
That's at the top.
You guys have to say for that motion.
Right? This is what we want, right?
Liza, you gonna make that motion?
Yeah, so I make a motion to appoint Terry Turnus to the Southwest Coordinated Regional Intro Probability Board.
Okay.
I'll second.
Motion by Liza, seconded by Jamie. Any discussion?
Thank you for that.
Thank you for all those words.
Liza, how do you vote?
Aye.
Jamie?
Aye.
Rick?
Aye.
Gene?
Aye.
All vote aye. That motion passes. Thanks Carmen.
That delinquent taxes and purchase of canine.
Okay, uh, delinquent taxes.
Okay, we did receive, we did mail out letters to the cities regarding the properties that were still, that weren't sold of the delinquent tax auction. So I did get a. Letter back from the city of Stanton. They are not interested in the three twelve Solms Avenue. Property, but the city of Beulah is interested in purchasing. The lot nine, block six in the Prairie Hills addition, um, in the amount of one dollar. I would like to review those.
How many properties were in Beulah? Just the one?
Just the one property.
Just the one.
One property in Stanton and two in Zap.
Okay, you haven't heard back from Zap yet?
I haven't heard back from Zap, but there are people who are interested in the property that Solms Avenue in Stanton, so. I would like to go ahead and put that on the website as available property to be sold at private sale. If we can do that.
Well, we.
The um.
We can do them one at a time.
We'll do them one at a time. But uh, the one in Stanton, is there any uh thing on it or is it big enough?
Uh, no, there is a building on it and uh we are paying utilities on it and there are some specials that are owed, so. In that regard, we would like that to be, um, you know, obviously whoever purchases that property, they'll have to be. Go to the city and pay the specials. That would be.
Mm-hmm.
In their interest.
I make the motion to. Sell the city of Beulah. That property as described on the, I don't know which one it is, block, whatever.
Yeah, it's um.
Lot nine, block six.
Lot nine, block six. Motion by Gene to sell the property in Beulah back to the city of Beulah for a dollar. Is there a second?
Oh, second.
Seconded by Rick. Any discussion on that? Seeing none. Gene?
Aye.
Rick?
Aye.
Liza?
Aye.
Jamie?
Aye.
All vote aye. That motion passes. So um. Is there anything for me to sign or do we do a county deed on that?
We'll have to do a deed, yeah.
And then the city of Stanton, we just, yeah, if they're not interested, we put that one up for sale. Do we do that on a?
It can just. What's that?
Do we do that on like an open bid process or?
So it just says that after, if there's no property sold after the delinquent tax sale, then the county can open or can offer it at private sale. That's how it's listed on in the century code, so if we get multiple um.
Interest?
Interest, then I think then, yeah, it's gonna have to be presented and everybody who's called in, I've kind of told them the same thing, that if we get. A few different parties interested, then the commission will have to meet on that and decide.
So just trying to make this a little formal, but. Um. Should we put some type of timeframe on it? Like, you know, we won't review any until like the second meeting of March, like if we get multiple ones in. But like once we open one, you kind of have to make a decision on that one unless there's multiple. That's what I'm getting at. I don't want us to like, somebody comes in and says, well, I'll give you a thousand for it and somebody's like, well, I'll give you eleven hundred for it, then all of a sudden you got a bidding. Thing and it's just kind of messy, but.
Right, yeah.
Well, that's kind of where I was asking, do we, let's say we would say all, all interested parties gotta have. However it gets worded by say March twenty-second, no, one to fifteenth. Let's go, let's say by April fifth, and then do we, if you got three people that are interested, do we have like a regular auction or do we, or is that a? How is it normal? What's normal?
It would be listed as a a property that's for sale, just like the auction house is and just like the uh social services building is.
So you just accept any offers and then I guess if we had multiple ones, that's what I'm getting at. What if you have multiple ones? How do you, how are we gonna handle that? Todd, any thought process? I mean, we could do an informal.
You could do it like you do any other bidding process, see if the bids are available from that date. Or. And I'll be honest, if I were buying and it was submit your offer and then we're gonna turn it into an auction. Reasonably, would you put in a bid if you know that you're just buying a ticket to go to an auction? Once you have an auction, then everybody.
Right.
Well, we could limit it to say the three highest bidders. That's, I've seen many of those auctions where you submit a bid, if we get five bids or. Two bids, you know, you can say the three highest bidders and then it's close to those three bidders. Cuz otherwise, yes, it'd be like Todd said, all the ones you got five bids and then ten people show up, no. You 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 limit it to like the three highest bidders and then have a regular auction.
And if nobody bids, then after that date, if anybody comes in, then we've done our.
If nobody bids, I would, yeah, that's what I would say.
So are we advertising it or are we just gonna do it through the website in our minutes?
We should advertise, I suppose.
In the paper as well?
I mean, it it's kind of one of those things we, like Todd said, we did the auction already. How much, how much do we wanna invest in? A property that's come back in taxes?
Well, does this fall under what are we legally obligated to do? Well, does this fall under, what are we legally obligated to do? Cause we own that property, so if we're gonna dispose of that property, I guess we do have to advertise it, don't we? We can't just... By word of mouth, we gotta put in the paper and say, this is what's for sale, you got until this date to get your bids in and then we'll accept the three highest bidders and have a, a closed auction.
Okay, and you're saying, you're thinking April fifth, so if we had...
I use just the date.
Yeah, no, I'm, because it, because it's a meeting date.
Yes.
That's why you chose it.
That's...
So if we said by...
It could even be sooner. I'm just, I just scanned the calendar real quick.
Yeah.
Cause other, we got March first and March fifteenth and then we go all the way to April fifth.
Yeah, I'm just thinking if we advertise it, we probably wanted it in at least one paper, maybe two. Yeah. And say like ten o'clock?
Did you need to say ten AM?
Yeah, I was gonna say ten AM. You know, they could be dropped off until ten AM on the fifth.
Okay.
Are you making a motion or do you want somebody else to do?
Yes, do I know my motion? I move that we, um, publicly advertise the, I don't have the paper again, the legal description of the Stanton property that we that we advertise, uh, three twelve, I can't pronounce that name.
Salms.
Salms Avenue in Stanton. And all bids have to be in by ten AM, April fifteenth, at which time we'll open the bids and the...
April fifth.
April fifth?
What did I say?
Fifteen. We want the fifth.
April fifth. I'm ahead of myself. April fifth and we'll accept the three highest bidders. And then have an auction between those three. I don't know how to word it more eloquently.
Okay. Motion by Jean, is there a second?
I'll second it.
Second by Rick. Any discussion? Any discussion? Seeing none, Jean?
Aye.
Rick?
Aye.
Liza?
Aye.
Jamie?
Aye.
All vote aye, that motion passes. There was Zap, but they haven't given us, um...
We haven't, we haven't heard back yet.
Yeah, and I guess my thought is, uh, since we gave ourselves enough time, if Zap comes back and says no, we can easily add a property to, to that April fifth time.
Yes, I agree.
Anything else on delinquent taxes? Um, we have canine purchase on the agenda, I see we got Terry here, so...
Well, I started with, um, Terry hired, uh, come on up there, but Terry hired a, a new deputy and he was a canine handler for Beulah PD. And, uh, Terry started negotiations with him, uh, just to see where they were at. I did talk to Frank, uh, the, uh, to crunch the numbers for you, they had offered what, eighteen thousand is what we, they had asked us? Uh, Terry talked to the sheriff, I mean, the mayor, he said that they were, they paid ten thousand for the dog. Terry offered him five thousand, they rejected that. So I talked to Frank, I said, what would you would work? He wanted eight thousand. Um, I counted at seventy-five, if, you know, providing we, through the, uh, board here. The numbers I arrived at were, uh, the life of the dog is about eight to ten years as a tool, so I used my, my number is nine. I, uh, came up with, um, eleven hundred dollars a year as a depreciation that dog is a year and a, uh, by the time we get it, it'd be about twenty months old. So there's some, some of the value of the dog is already gone. And, uh, so when I looked at what the value of the dog was versus, uh, from the ten thousand dollars working back, it came out at about eight thousand, little over eight, just a few dollars over eight thousand dollars. So that's where I counted, what, seventy-five hundred dollars? I talked to Frank on the way over here and he made some calls earlier and they said it was up to him and he said he would accept, uh, seventy-five hundred. And, um, that was pending the board here and I had asked Terry to, uh, fill in the blanks for me on the other part, I can crunch the numbers part, but I wanted him to tell us, fill in the board about, uh, justifying where we could use the dog for. So that's where I would have Terry to, where we can use that.
Mister Chairman, Commissioners, that's, uh, should, for the most part, be an easy sell. I think a dog or a canine unit is just a invaluable, uh, bridge between the public, especially even kids in school and our department and our community as a whole, uh, as well as a useful tool for even the state's attorney's office for us to, to detect, you know, the movements of large amounts in narcotics within the community. And, uh, that would be our plan to offer that dog to the public schools for outreach for one and, and to keep narcotics, illegal narcotics out of their building. I would offer it also to the state, uh, in parole probation searches. I mean, they're just all around a good tool. Uh, this dog is not a, a, uh, what you call a, an aggression dog or whatever, you don't open, it's not one of them, you open the door and let it out to catch your criminals or anything, it's a tracking dog slash narcotics dog. So I guess a lot of them issues about a bite dog, we don't have them, that's not something I would be interested in anyway. So I, I guess for the overall cost to the county, I think it'd be a good purchase. I don't have, uh, any line item, I don't believe for that right now, so of course I'd need your permission to bring that on board. And what we would be looking at is, what I would do is I would offer, uh, you know, that Adam's coming on board as a deputy, there is no promises made, of course I would like to keep him as a, a canine deputy. But, uh, what I would do is I would offer him for the days he's not working, fourteen dollars for that day for a dog upkeep and care, you know, take care of, walk it, whatever. So, uh, that would be an added expense too, as far as what the county's looking at for expenses. Uh, we're already, you know, gonna be paying Adam's wages, but that extra, the seventy-five hundred plus that fourteen dollars a day when he's not on shift, we'd have to pay for upkeep of that dog. So I think the expense is minimal there for the tool we get. I can ask Todd to speak to the, how much a dog is worth for a county.
I am a hundred percent behind Terry bringing Raider on with Adam. Uh, I've seen the dog work, um, cause we've been, as a county, we've been utilizing it cause it's the only drug dog in the county. Uh, we have to reach out to neighboring counties and I can tell you with Adam being in Beulah and needing the dogs, needing Raider services here in Stanton or out in Golden Valley area, that it's been an invaluable tool. Now, let me just explain a couple of things. If drugs are a major problem, fentanyl, even our small community, we saw the deaths directly tied to fentanyl. I've spoke with members of the community and the sane ones are terrified of this stuff in our community, especially now they're finding this stuff is being laced into marijuana. So you get somebody who, well, it's illegal, it's only an infraction, takes a small amount of marijuana and they're getting fentanyl and they're going into crisis. We don't see the numbers here because we don't have the numbers of people. Percentage wise, I'd say we're holding with the bigger cities. Raider is a very well-trained dog, I don't care how good a dog is trained, it's all about the handler. Very simply, a good handler will have a good dog. A good dog can teach a good handler. We've already got a matched pair. I, I think it's imperative that we have one. In fact, I would encourage our other departments, if possible, I know that Frank has talked about getting another dog. Having two in the county would be fantastic, three would be ideal. But we have this resource available at seventy-five hundred dollars, plus some dog chow and Adam playing with the dog. Most dog handlers for decades, they fed the animal out of their own, own pocket. They didn't get paid for doing it and, well, somebody got involved and messed that up. We now have to do something. But for seventy-five hundred dollars, um, we still have a lot of working life left in this canine officer. And it's not just because everybody here knows I'm a dog lover. As a prosecutor, I like good drug dogs. Canine goes by a vehicle that we have no legal authority to search, it alerts, we now have legal authority to search. We get a call that so-and-so I think is dealing drugs, here's the traffic going by, et cetera, et cetera. It's not enough for us, for me to go to the judge for a warrant. I can't approve a warrant like that. Raider goes by and alerts on that door, now we got a warrant. I, I, I think passing up this opportunity would be sending a message that none of us have intended. If we're gonna be serious about drugs, we need Raider. The alternative would be to go out, purchase one on an open market, train an officer. And keep in mind that changing a dog handler needs to be done extremely early in its training career only. If somebody else would take over the handling of Raider at this point, it would jeopardize the dog's certification, therefore its value legally. So this, this fell on our lap, it's a great thing. I urge the county to approve whatever was needed so that Terry can bring Raider on with, with Adam.
And you have a, a unit that's decked out for canine already?
We have, we've had canines in the past, so we do have the equipment we need. I think we could probably do some of the other modifications to the vehicle. Again, we don't need the, we, we even actually have the cage that was designed, the half cage to open the door and let the dog out for, you know, a bite dog, but we, we don't need that, we can make the modifications to existing patrol vehicles to make it work. So the equipment part is real minimal, probably some of our own label, labor with Kurt and Jim helping out. So, and just a reminder, if you, if you know the dog and the, and the history, uh, Beulah's not out that much, I know they did a lot of fundraising and stuff for that dog, but, uh, that dog was involved in that, uh, drug bust where they netted in the past, I think it was fifty thousand dollars and the federal government returned some of that. So, and that's something we're working with, with Todd on to make sure that we're getting them seizures in on time. In fact, we got one coming up just from last week where we're gonna be asking to seize a large sum of money and, and some guns, yeah, and some guns to, uh, sell to try to offset some of the prices here.
And the other thing, Beulah's not gonna be out anything. I, I wanna disagree with you on that, Terry. Adam's not changing his residence. I'm not gonna go on a public record and explain, but he, this dog is gonna be fully and probably more readily available to Beulah than the other towns, so the only that's changing is we're feeding Raider. That, that's the only thing.
And that's gonna be part of...
And if the food becomes a problem, I will personally buy the dog food.
No, no, they're, they're, the, the city of Beulah is gaining a sheriff's cap, in my opinion.
I understand all that, that was, that was gonna be part of my questions, is, a question was the ongoing expenses like vet bills and, uh, cause I'm sure this...
Well, that, yeah, they're, they'll need, you know, and that's what I would line up, I would, I would line that line item up for next year, you know, for this year's budget, when we go into budget discussions this year and get a, a number for you guys together. But yeah, there are, there are ongoing expenses for that. And we did it in the past, I think with the assistance of the auditor, I could give you some pretty close numbers year to year, what you're looking at to run a canine unit.
There was in the law enforcement magazine three years ago that I read, um, there was a copy laying in my office of the, of this magazine, but I read an issue, it was three years ago and I was back in two thousand, early twenty, where a bigger department, I think it was Milwaukee, Wisconsin, was arguing that the vet bills made it impossible fiscally for them to have this drug dog. So the handler made the argument that the city was paying more for his health insurance than they were paying in vet bills. And if this becomes an issue, you can buy pet health insurance, my daughter has it.
Yeah, I think my, my only question was, Terry, I know previously we've had where we've had bills go through for the dog food and I just didn't know if that was included in that fourteen dollars a day or if that's separate then, so...
That would be, that would be separate.
Okay.
And that would be, yeah, so there are, yeah, there are, uh, other expenses that we, we'd be meeting throughout the course of this year that weren't in the budget. There would be the dog food and, uh, there would be, you know, the vet bills, hopefully there aren't too many of them. And then, uh, you know, some miscellaneous items that, I guess, pet owners would, would know, or dog owners, so there's some reoccurring expense. That and that fourteen dollars a day, you know, that would drive, uh, the salary expenses up, or I think we'd voucher that out separately, is how we did it in the past, but...
Those are, part of my concerns are the ongoing expenses and that, I just wanna throw this out at the sheriff that, you know, I don't wanna see bills coming through that we taking them to pet grooming every two weeks.
No.
You know?
No, no.
Cause I, you know, all of a sudden, well, no, you agreed to have this dog and we gotta take him to the vet every, and I understand there might be some legal parameters that you have to have this dog taken to the vet and I get, we'll, we can handle that.
No, it, it's definitely, it's a service dog, it's a working dog.
Yeah, I don't...
The good thing in getting a dog at this age that's been in the field, if it's gonna have problems, veterinarily wise, medically, they have already surfaced and none of those have surfaced. The reason drug dogs, even though the dog may live to be fourteen, fifteen, eighteen, and then about the max life you can expect is ten, because they sniff drugs for so long, it affects them.
And what I could do is I could flag, you know, anything beyond dog food and normal veterinary expenses and, and bring that to you guys for approval, you know? Because being, being you haven't provided me with a line item for this year because this came after budget season, you know, that would, I think that would be a, a fair thing to ask for, so... And being it's not a bite dog, I don't expect them, you know, big expenses, it's not out there running after, chasing down or fighting criminals or anything, you know, the environment you bring them dogs into, for the most part, is controlled. Things can happen out alongside the highway that you don't expect always. So I guess, you know, that's something our insurance would also probably cover, I guess I'd have to look into that.
Yeah. We would be covered under Enderf because that's policy coverage.
If it happens.
Remember the discussion, it came up eight, nine years ago. And yeah, it's, it was covered by Enderf, we can double check, but I urge the county to do this, um, because very simply, Beulah can't retrain this dog to another officer. There's people who will try. It messes with the certification. They'd have to go through a huge expense to retrain them to one of their officers, even if it's previously experienced KNI officers, because they work as a team. This is an ideal situation with a proven canine officer and a proven handler. Anytime Raider and Adam have worked the case, there has not been one issue. Had one defense lawyer try questioning some things, we sent over the certifications and that put the end to that issue. And the defense attorney, it had attacked other drug dogs around the state using the same tactic that we shut down. So this is a known entity. Canine officers are protected under law similarly to regular human law enforcement officers. Uh, and there's a place for your aggression, cross-trained drug dogs. I don't think we need one of that sort in Mercer County. I much prefer what we get in Raider because this can be a public relations tool and an effective drug dog. It'll make my job easier in trying to protect the community from drugs. And maybe I'm blinded a bit by that. And maybe I'm blinded a bit by that, but I, I've worked with K-9 officers.
I, I can add to a little bit, you know, just for, going back to the numbers again, it's like, was, was speaking with Frank and stuff that the original cost, we, we're not gonna have all this, but the original cost was about twenty-five thousand dollars to the city of Beulah for the cages and the boxes that they have, the training and the dog. So now, now, we already gonna get the training and the dog for seventy-five hundred bucks, and then we already have the handler here too.
Well, to kind of redirect this, is there a motion to approve the purchase of?
I'll file that motion, that we purchase this dog for seventy-five hundred dollars. Raider, is his name.
Okay. Motion by Rick to purchase Raider for seventy-five hundred dollars from the city of Beulah. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Jamie? Any further discussion? Discussion? Rick?
I vote aye.
Jamie?
Aye.
Liza?
Aye.
Jean?
Aye.
All vote aye. Motion passes. Do you have a new K-9?
Thank you. Thank you, Commissioner. I have one more thing, I'll just bring up quick to ask Commissioner, me and Commissioner Baumann have talked about it, is our vehicles. We're gonna have several vehicles. I'll need a way forward for you guys what to do with them. I'm decommissioning. So that, you know, whatever, if you guys can start giving it thought. He, he was talking about maybe looking at one for another department as a spare vehicle when one of your employees needed to travel or a commissioner needed to go somewhere. So I guess I could get some direction on that. I don't wanna keep holding them on my inventory forever, because, you know, they-
If you keep it as a spare and leave the lights and sirens all you do-
Well, we, we have, yeah, and, and we have one of them. I have one set aside as a spare, you know, for our use, but these are gonna be vehicles above and beyond that. We, we do have, hopefully soon, someday, new vehicles coming, so I'll have two more. So I'll actually be looking at having three vehicles over there. I don't wanna keep them on the lot.
Haven't we previously auctioned those off?
Yeah, we, we have, and there was some confusion with that, and I think it was delegated back down through the sheriff at the time. But the sentry code allows for only the commission to, to approve either selling them at, you know, at auction or a bid or, or in department or whatever. That's, that falls on you guys. If you guys grant me that authority back, I guess I could look at doing that for you.
That'd be my recommendation. It's an auction, I'm off.
I'm not a huge fan of pool vehicles for, you know, government agencies, just because I, we, I don't see us using it enough. It's a lot easier and cheaper to do.
We have insurance and all those other kinda things, so I think it's just better to.
And that's just some things if you guys give some thought to. When they get in, I'll bring a list of what we have over here and what we're looking, we're, we're looking at auctioning. And we can go from there and clean up my inventory too, so.
Sounds good.
Thank you.
Thanks, Terry.
Thank you.
When Adam comes on board, he'll have to have to introduce Raider. I think he'd be very impressed with what we're getting.
I'd like to see him at the next meeting. Bring him in.
When does Adam start?
March.
March?
Adam starts March first.
Uh, right around that, I believe it's six.
Six.
We line it up so the pay period, or we work that twenty-eight day schedule. We don't line it up just right, we can actually have an employee that goes a month before he gets paid. You know, he works the first month, and then when he leaves employment, he gets paid that time, so.
He'll be employed, but he'll be here by the time our next meeting ends.
Yes. I, it was my intention to bring him over and introduce him to you guys.
That was what I was just saying.
You get to see what you're paid for sometimes.
There you go. See if he can find any drugs on me.
I wouldn't take that challenge.
I worked at CLE a number of years back in the nineties, and they had a drug dog demonstration. They used three different dogs, and they used three potential heights. There were six-foot blocks of solid concrete, so a small amount of drugs and Tupperware dead center in the setup concrete. And all three dogs came in, even though they moved these things around, the whole warehouse dragged the scent. All three dogs on the block with it in the warehouse, it would cover most of the courthouse grounds.
Crazy.
One of the attacks, the defense has used the problems that the dogs are too good, that they're too sensitive, so therefore they can't handle the problems they caused. It's pretty important to take that back.
All right, eleven o'clock, Auction House. We got Chip here, we got Jim here. Come on up, Chip. Either one, you can sit or you can stand, whatever. Morning.
Morning. So what's your question?
So we've had, we've had the Auction House on several times.
Yep.
Um, we had a contract with you to tear it down. You've expressed interest in purchasing it. We just wanna, we just wanna get off dead center and go one way or the other.
Nine months ago, Ron was supposed to have started. Okay, when we came in, we wanted the specials paid on and the taxes paid, and we would take it over, put it back into a decent building and put it back on taxes. Now, we haven't heard anything other than bits and pieces of what's going on. Our insurance to tear it down ended January thirty-first, and our insurance company isn't in, in the state even anymore. So the one stroke that's gotten us won't even insure us for demolition. But we don't want it tore down. But, so where does it stand with you guys?
Well, I think I can address some of that.
Okay.
You would need the city to waive the special tax, because as far as, and I, I've got some concerns, because Glenn had brought it to my attention last week, that some of what might be listed as specials are utilities. And utilities are not to be collected via special tax. That violates sentry code. The, the county is essentially a billing agent when it comes to the city's taxes, because the county sends out the bill out for them. We get the figures from the city. This is what's owed for property tax and these specials for road improvement, what have you. The county, very simply, the, the county taxpayers should not be paying for a building that we end up with through a no bid at a tax sale. Should not create a liability of two, three thousand dollars for this building onto the rest of the taxpayers. So my position is that the city would be the one that would have to waive the special to accomplish what you wanna do, and I'm not speaking to state's attorney, I'm speaking to somebody who grew up in the business you do. Common sense by the city would say, let's waive the special, get it back on the tax rolls, and be done with it. Uh, but I cannot advise the county to be essentially gifting to the city a special tax, and then I've now got to find out further, are utilities being billed as part of that special tax? Because if that's done, then the city needs to go back and correct some things on that. Personally, I, I hope, that old building holds a lot of memories for me growing up.
Every people wanted to shoot me out of the backhoe and we took the grocery store down. They're really gonna be wild on this one.
Yeah. So, that, that, that was Clyde's, that's still Clyde's to me. I'm sorry.
That's right, yeah.
And the old pool hall, I, I'd love to see that up and doing something again.
Okay.
But from a legal standpoint, I can't advise these five people to be giving a gift essentially to the city of Stanton, so they can get a piece of property back on their tax rolls.
Yep.
So if the city would waive the special,
Okay.
Uh, I, I, I'm not speaking for the commissioners, but I'm guestimating pretty safely that if you walked up and handed a dollar to Travis right now, we'd have that deed done for you before you leave the courthouse.
That was my understanding nine months ago.
Yeah. But the special tax issues come up, and legally, the county taxpayers should not be gifting to Stanton. And then the other issue that Glenn brought to my attention last week, 'cause she was going through some of these, and it looks like electric, water, sewer, and trash are being added as specials and collected as a special tax. And that's a no-no. And it's getting to that tax time. You know, you can write off the taxes you pay on your home or your business property or farm property, but you can't write off your water bill to your house. So if this is listed as a special tax, that creates IRS problems. This goes into a Pandora's box that I wanna bolt back shut.
So we, as the commission, could offer it to him for a dollar, 'cause it's been through all the processes, and whatever specials would be between him and the city?
Exactly.
Correct.
So is that contract, though, that we had to tear it down just null and void, and we're just done with it?
There's been some confusion.
Because it doesn't look like it was ever-
When this was first brought to my attention, the conclusion I reached, Chip, was that, wait a minute, you're a breach of contract. But then, I got the Paul Harvey, rest of the story, and no, some of the commissioners told you, hold off. If you wanna buy it, that makes more sense. No, no, there, there's no breach of contract here. This is a change of circumstance. And now that, and we're having more of these insurance companies pull out, nobody wants to get around demolition, because some of the contractors in more populated areas doing uncontrolled implosions. No insurance company wants to get into that. So, I mean, this is not an implosion. This is, this is a skilled operator at a backhoe pulling it down, but they classify it the same as if we were gonna do it the fun way. If we were gonna do implosions, I, I tell you what, I'm taking a hiatus. I'm going to hell. I like blowing stuff up.
Do we have it noted anywhere, though, that it was told to hold off?
No, but we have knowledge of it. Jean had referenced that he remembers hearing that.
Not that I want it gone. I don't want it gone, 'cause it's memories also as a kid, but I do want it done right if it was-
Correct. Well, what happened is, is we had a formal written agreement, which is only supposed to be modified by another written agreement, but the realities of the world are that possible amendment, we have solid proof of it. So I'm saying we're gonna do the right thing, and that contract should be relieved, and-
Yeah, my question to you, Jamie, are, are you asking if the contractor came to us, and I don't know what the bid was, and say, you owe me twenty-five thousand dollars 'cause I had a contract? Or are you, or is your question that if we want to enforce that and say, you, you know, you have to do this for the, whatever the amount was?
Neither way. The, the contract is-
But no, I mean, is, is that your question?
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure that we didn't, but you said it wasn't a breach of contract. I just wanna make sure that we are doing this correctly, that it was.
And as evidenced by the discussion here, all parties have agreeded, have agreed, which the legal term is, we've reached an accord, that this building shouldn't be tore down if we have somebody who can put it to use. So that's why it was held off with to begin with.
Correct.
Basically, both parties forfeited their right. Chip being paid to tear it down and the county to have it torn down through action. Yes, it's enforceable in court. It's a little more difficult than if things are written, but in a gr, contracts don't always have to be in writing to be enforceable. How many, how many hundreds of thousands or millions of dollars of business have you done on a word and a handshake?
About all of it.
I grew up making a living that way.
And so if we would choose to sell it to Chip, utilities would cease for the county that we would not have to pay for anymore, 'cause that's-
'Cause there, there was a time after we talked about tearing it down, that you guys had a chance to sell it, so you asked us permission to sell it.
Yeah.
And it was absolutely.
Right. And everybody, everybody behaved reasonably here, but we didn't have a piece of paper that-
So where we're at now is, we're, my understanding is where, where we are at now, we would agree to sell it to the city of Stanton for a dollar.
No, we would sell directly to Chip.
Oh, to Chip.
But let me go back to the city and see what they'll do, but you agreed to sell it to me for a dollar. Let me go see what the city will do.
Yeah.
Right, and the specials, and we will do nothing with the specials. That'll be between the city and the purchaser.
I mean, it was never worded by anybody yet.
Right.
Is the city the one looking into those specials for utilities?
No, it, it's all by the city, as far as the special goes. And so, back to like how cities, cities have the ability, if a resident doesn't pay their standard utilities, they can assess those at the end of the year. They have to certify them by October first or fifteenth, and then they can be put on the tax roll. That was probably a portion of this, and then also the other portion is that city of Stanton did a street right improvement district. And then those are part of the specials.
Correct.
Correct. So, I guess, what I would be looking for is a motion that we would agree to sell the property to Chip for a dollar and give him, you know, thirty days to approve that, and then if he's fine with it in the city.
They had a meeting Monday, so there won't be one for another.
Two weeks, that's right, yeah. They, they need the second and fourth, yeah. So if we give him thirty days, we should be fine, but I'll need a motion to that effect, if that's what we choose.
Yeah, that's what we'll do.
Okay. Jean, you making that motion?
Yes, I'll make that motion.
Okay. Motion by Jean to offer the Auction House property to Chip Erickson for a dollar. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Liza. Any discussion?
And just to clarify that, we are not paying the specials. Okay.
And they have, and he hasn't told when then to-
You, you, the county's already paid, two years already paid it.
Uh, I don't know.
I don't know where we are.
Just utilities.
Just util, we've paid utilities, yes, I know that. Um, let's-
I think they paid twenty and twenty, twenty-one and twenty, but they haven't paid twenty-three.
There's been portions of the, the specials paid, but we would have to look back and see, whatever's owed now, moving forward, we would not be responsible for.
We wouldn't, right. What's owed now?
I said thirty days, but, I mean, March fifteenth would be the four weeks, would be our next meeting, then we can address it at the meeting.
And maybe, just for clarification, because our purpose here, if we have Chip come in, is to simplify and get this done, is that if you can get word from the city before the next county commission meeting, just give Sam a call, put it on, or so that they can discuss it and have the formal, well, we wouldn't need to.
We wouldn't need to.
If you approve it, just get ahold of Samurai and we'll get you, go get the deed and get the transaction.
Right. This motion is, to my knowledge, approves the sale.
Correct.
Correct.
Unless you turn it down at this point, yeah.
Okay. Any other discussion on the motion? Seeing that, Jean?
Aye.
Liza?
Aye.
Jamie?
Aye.
Rick?
I vote aye.
All vote aye. That motion passes. Thanks for coming in, Chip.
Oh, got three minutes.
Got three minutes.
We have, we don't have, uh, portfolio updates, but I did part of mine already.
Um, I guess I got one sheet up here. I know Cindy's in here. You just need everybody to sign the resolution. So when we did the approval for the rezone for the Lazy H subdivision, I signed it, but I recused myself, so she just did a new signature sheet that does not have a spot for me to sign. So we just all need to sign this again, and then that will be formal for, for Cindy.
And where, where are we on all that property? Is all that property, there wasn't that little three acres still held out? I don't even know where we finally settled on that. The watershed part, they were gonna have that as, leave it as egg?
Yeah, we did it as commercial.
Okay.
They have waterboard meets-
Tomorrow.
Tomorrow for this property too. I thought that was completed, but it's not.
They gave the preliminary approval, and then on tomorrow, they're going to see what they need so that, 'cause now that the Water Resource Board has authority over the stormwater management and the ordinances as part of the final plat, there's an approval for them. So if they have any final contingencies or recommendations, we'll get final approval from the Water Resource Board, and then the commission can review the final plat and get final approval on the plat.
Okay. Every second. Got all the bids?
I don't know. Let me-
Yeah, I think so. You're chairman. You got all the bids? Where do you go now? Generally, they open up- Generally, we open up bids, we have our attorney here, but I don't-
He just stepped out, but we just need a motion to close accepting bids for the landfill lease.
I still move we close bids on the landfill lease.
Okay, motion by Rick to close the landfill lease bids, is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Jamie, any discussion? Seeing none, Rick?
Aye.
Jamie?
Aye.
Liza?
Aye.
Gene?
Aye.
All vote aye, that motion passes. All right, we can start opening bids.
Do we open them? Usually our auditor-
Usually the auditor does, she's just writing down.
I'm just, yeah, sorry.
It's tough to be the note taker.
Ahead of me today.
Auditor or statester. Do we have who the bid is from? Has it got a name on the outside of the envelope?
Travis Nelson. Do I need to read this off or just pass it to you guys?
No, you don't need to, you just read it off what the bid is.
Travis Nelson is bidding fifty-two dollars an acre.
Fifty-two.
Fifty-two.
Miles Mettler. Miles would like to place a bid of fifty dollars per acre for the twenty-nine acres of crop land by the landfill.
Fifty.
Fifty.
Okay.
Robert Strand would like to bid forty-five dollars an acre. Ryan Wolf. Forty-six dollars an acre. Mike Shoot, forty-five dollars an acre. And Cody Thomas would like to bid forty-eight dollars an acre. And this is for a three-year lease, correct? Correct, three-year lease, and it is twenty-nine acres of crop land near the landfill.
That's all the bids?
That's, yes, Candy, you don't have any, that you're holding in your back pocket, okay?
Okay, so in this instance, we go with the high bid because they're paying us, so-
Travis Nelson.
Is there, is there a motion to approve Travis Nelson's bid?
Except Travis Nelson's bid of fifty-two dollars an acre for the twenty-three year lease for twenty-nine acres of crop land.
I'll second.
Okay, motion by Rick, seconded by Jamie, any discussion? After approval, we'll just have Todd work up the lease agreement like we've had in the past, so any other discussion? Seeing none, Rick?
I vote aye.
Jamie?
Aye.
Liza?
Aye.
Gene?
Aye.
All vote aye, that motion passes. All right.
Thank you, everybody who put in bids.
Thank you.
Fifty-two.
Fifty-two. Travis Nelson.
Yes.
That's Mike Shoot. He lives, writes off.
He's on satellite.
He lives right there. I don't know who's with Mike, Mike is right walking out right now.
Okay, portfolio updates. Gene, you've kind of said you don't have much left.
Yeah, mine is short and sweet again. I gave you the update on the meeting for the road department, which Rick was probably going to do, the weed board did not meet this month, they're going to meet next month, and all my other portfolios, everything seems to be going okay.
Okay, Rick? Yep, go ahead.
Okay, road department, I talked to the road policy. One thing I did, and I did, I talked to Travis, or Travis, my, look at these names out here. I did talk to Terry about fueling at the shop again, you know, but I did run into something interesting I didn't know about there was, when they purchase fuel, something I guess we'd have to watch a little more, but Rachel told me when they purchase fuel, the purchase price is cheaper at the pump at certain times, so, so right now, it's cheaper to fill at the shop.
So we're not getting a bulk discount at the shop?
When they buy at a bulk discount, I'm just picking numbers, say three dollars and ten cents, well, then the pump drops prices and it's three dollars or nickel or whatever, it's actually cheaper at the pump than it is at the shop.
But I think sometimes they don't know what is at the shop.
Yeah, you wouldn't know that.
The deputies wouldn't know what the shop's price is, so they wouldn't know to go to the pump in town.
Well, and that would be, like I talked to Terry about, that would be on, say, him or myself or Rachel to find that out and get that information to Terry, so he gets that out there where they need to go, not, it's not on a deputy.
Right.
You know, that would be their responsibility. But I was just, interesting, I was going to pass it on that I didn't know that, but that was something I didn't find. The fair board meeting, I guess, I have no update because that's tonight. Recorder and veteran services, I haven't heard anything on them. Sheriff's Department, we've heard everything that I had on that. The P and Z is tomorrow night, and we guys have been all up with that, and the code of social services is tomorrow afternoon, and there is one interesting part there is that I didn't understand or know everything about it, but I'm learning bits and pieces, but there was a funeral, I don't know all the details yet, but there was a funeral held in the county, we paid for that funeral here a while back at four thousand dollars. Well, Terry brought it up, put it on the agenda, we paid for it, so I took it to social services and they said that that should have come out of their budget, a portion of it, but I talked to, I don't have all the details because he was, he's been swamped, but I talked to Joe over there and there are, you know, I asked him, how does this work, why does that, and there was, there's issues out there too, that there's still property and there's other things there too, so I need to ask a lot more questions before we can get this, you know, totally resolved, but it needs to go somewhere other than just our desk, you know, so it's just a matter of keeping working at it till we can find out what's going on with it. I'm going to go talk to Joe about it so he can explain more to me why that, why those, where it was, and then I can figure out, and then I can take it back to social services and get it presented or whatever we need to do, but that needs to, you know, it needs to be addressed yet, so, I mean, it's still, still on the table, but it's like, I don't under, I don't know all the details of it, but it's just going to keep working on it. There, I haven't had any contact with the Custer Health, one of the West Central Human Resources, I haven't done anything with that, I think they're, I didn't know about them, I didn't get any information on them, and their next meeting is in March, so I'll be go to them in March or April, I'm not sure, but I will be there, but I haven't had anything to do with them yet, so find out more about that. I think I hit everybody. Fair board, I think I got them all. But I mean, there hasn't been a lot of changes other than the sheriff's department and what I discussed here, so.
Okay, library board meets twenty-seventh of February, so I won't have an update until the next meeting. A lot of my other ones, this is kind of the slow time, so I don't really have much to update, so, Liza?
I have airport tonight and I have ambulance next week, but I'm not, I don't know if it's been set already, because I, but I think it would be important to let people know too that they, we have a few offices that are currently working on our financial software, and that we are working on it and they are looking into it, it's just a matter of trying to figure out which program is going to be the best fit, but I think they have even, like, somebody coming in to do a demonstration, so that presentation is March, or February twenty-third. Okay, I just wanted to make sure everybody knew that we are working on it.
Okay, Jamie?
Landfill, we, it looks like she got her heater fixed in her seat, because that was in the bills. Jim has had really nothing, he's doing a little small, some small building projects that have been held up for other reasons. Buster and I are planning to meet next week if I don't have to leave town for a funeral, and the others I haven't heard from, so they've been quiet. And law, or emergency is in March, so.
I just wanted to note too that I've been up in the dispatch area and that carpeting looks very nice up there.
It's very, it is very nice, they worked very fast and it's very nice up there.
Sounds good. Oh, there's Todd. Anybody need a break or are you ready?
I gotta use the restroom.
Okay, let's take a quick recess and then we'll do our executive session when we come back in.
Your time too, I need to go spend a couple of weeks down there with my boys and get out of this cold with my cabs and my shift are going to be starting, so I'm not going to get out of here for a while.
All right, I'll call the commission meeting back to order after our recess. We're going to go into an executive session to receive legal counsel from the state's attorney. Do we have to announce anything else or we'll just ask?
Little litany you need to read, do you have that?
I don't, I should just have that.
Always here. Yeah, if you can grab the stickers, I'll help you post them up on the doors. Yesterday I had court in Bismarck, so I finished up with that and came to the office, of course, checked my email before I left. And over the weekend, I was looking at a particular type of gun that I'm curious about. Email that was waiting for me when I got to the office yesterday morning was from Henry. They've now come out with a semi-automatic pistol caliber carbine. And I was looking at one from Caltech that just tickled my interest, I'm like, but I wasn't looking, there's no connection between that email and me looking, guy has a cute little gun. And I've never, Henry has not made a bad product.
No, I hear it all there.
I don't know anything about them, all I deal with John Deere mostly.
Hey, I'm entitled to wear my John Deere's owner's edition cap. I got my little short green line, I got the little tractor, and I've got the sary and the saturator, and then I've got the plug aerator. Now, I was going to buy the John Deere sweeper, but it was black, it's made by the same company that makes them for TSC, and that John Deere sticker is expensive.
Yeah, I know. Thought you got us on pause.
Are you guys in full executive session or do you have to read that first?
We've got to read this first.
Read that first and I'll put the stickers on the door.
All right, the next item on the agenda is to have an executive session for legal counsel. At this time, a motion would be in order to discuss the next topic in executive session rather than an open meeting, is there such a motion?
I still move.
Motion by Liza.
I'll second.
Second by Jamie, any discussion? If not, Liza?
Aye.
Jamie?
Aye.
Rick?
Nay.
Nay, okay, Gene?
Nay.
All vote aye, that motion carries. The executive session, I don't know if we would record it, but-
No, executive sessions are not to be recorded.
Are we live?
Now we are.
Okay, the minutes will show that the executive session was adjourned at eleven fifty-nine. Public has been invited to return to the meeting and we are now back in open session. There is basically no decision that the commission needs to make at this point, other than the fact that we had talked to our legal counsel, and with nothing else on the agenda, meeting adjourned. Thanks, everybody.
Let's leave it here. Give it to you when we come back.